You make all of our country look like the places that you fled from. We don't want you here. Respectfully, get the fuck out of my country. I don't want you here. We don't want you here. I don't want you here, I don't want you here.
That's fine, sir, just.
This is incredible that individuals who were charged with beating cops with bats are allowed to come to this city and say that they are going to take a holy book and burn it. This is not free speech.
But at the end of the day, we were not violent, but we were met with violence. We had videos and thousands of people have seen it's viral on X of our protesters standing here being assaulted. Your own officers were feeling overwhelmed and eventually.
We were reminded of something fundamental. Courage is not loud. Patriotism is not cruel. And strength is not hateful.
Thank you guys very much for having me here tonight. My name is Isaac Thomas. Um, I'm just an American citizen and I'm here to speak. You know, there's a lot of tension that I see going on. I've heard a lot of talk tonight about fascism and President Trump, things like that. And I find it interesting because it's coming from a party that forced vaccinated people and tried to lock them in their homes for three years straight and shut down schools. And um, and I guess here's the point I want to make, you know, there's, it's okay to have different views, different religions and different political views. Um, but there's a fine line between having a belief and then trying to force your belief on other people. Every person in this room has a right to follow the Muslim religion or to be a Christian or to be anything like that. And I think that everyone in our group of protesters here completely agrees that there should be no sort of hatred towards people. As Christians, we are called to love all people, even though we might not agree with Islam or we might not agree with um, Joe Biden or whatever it may be, that we should still treat people with respect and with love. And um, tonight when we came here to protest, nobody was violent. We don't agree with Islam. We spoke openly about that. We don't agree with Sharia law. We don't agree with six-year-olds being allowed to marry. Um, but at the end of the day, we were not violent, but we were met with violence. We had videos and thousands of people have seen it's viral on X of our protesters standing here being assaulted. Your own officers were feeling overwhelmed and eventually, uh, you know, at first for about two hours, they weren't able to do anything because the crowd was so big. Um, and there wasn't enough officers to help. Finally, once they got some backup, they put some barricades up and did what they should have did at the beginning, which was separate the two crowds. Clearly, these tensions are very high. The crowd should have been separated and one people should have been able to protest peacefully. The other side should have been able to have their views. That's not what happened tonight. Instead, multiple people were assaulted. Uh, it was caught on video and we would like to make police reports for the assaults that happened to us. So far, the officers have refused to do that. Uh, one asked me and I made sure I was recording. They watched somebody throw food on me. Um, I asked the officer to make report, asked for my ID. I said, here it is. And he said, okay, you can come in and go to the police department tomorrow to make a report. He wouldn't, uh, he wouldn't accept that. So I would ask that this council, despite all of the many disagreements between our religion and whatnot, that everyone treat people with respect and that we acknowledge the right for people to have different views, including the protesters, right? Islam has a right to, to support Islam and so do people that may not agree with that. That's not what happened tonight. And I think if this city doesn't handle this and if the officers are not, uh, you know, let known that we have a right to make a police report, there will be legal action taken against this council and I want that this to be considered a formal notice. The last thing I want to say is Jesus is Lord. Thank you guys and have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Jojo Bazey. Check the overflow. Yep, yep, thank you, chief. Thank you, ma'am. Just a kind reminder, you're just naming address for the record and then you have a three-minute limitation. The clerk will let you know when there's 30 seconds left, okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Jojo Bazey. I live in West Dearborn around Lovegood Park. So today I would like to come here to talk about the recent hate that's been going on online and in real life with these protests in Dearborn, Michigan. I feel unsafe in my own city now. From the hate that's been going online, I have the app X. The things that I have been seeing, I've been seeing death threats, I've been seeing gun threats, I've been seeing a lot. So for them to come here and call it a peaceful protest and then continue to disrespect us as people, not even only as Muslims, just as people, I don't know what he thought he was doing by holding up a piece of bacon like it was going to scare us away. Um, it's just completely disrespectful. I think, um, that you're not trying to be peaceful. You are trying to get us to be mad and to be angry. And I think that it's really, how do I word this? I don't think you're here to do anything but cause chaos. You sit here and you try to burn a Quran, that didn't work out and it's never going to work out. I'll let you know that from now. Um, I, as a Muslim, would never sit here and try to burn a Bible or disrespect anyone of any kind of religion. And I feel in danger. With these people behind me, I feel in danger in my own city. I'm 18. I should not be feeling scared. They, in our countries, the reason why most of our parents immigrated here was because they were dying. And now when we come here, we can't even be safe. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, we have two more speakers before the time will expire and then we'll take the rest at the end of the council meeting. We have Ali Hassan.
Good evening, council members and whoever else came. Bismillah, arhamanirahim, in the name of Allah, the most gracious, the most merciful. I just want to say a few things before I start. First of all, the word Sharia just means law. Saying Sharia law is saying law, law. So it seems like there's quite large group of individuals here who are intellectually inept. And if that word is too big for them, intellectually inept, I'll say it again, they can Google it later. But other than that, it is incredible that individuals who were charged with beating cops with bats are allowed to come to this city and say that they are going to take a holy book and burn it. This is not free speech. This is not hate speech. This is speech that will initiate violence. That is correct. This will initiate violence. You are coming to come and burn a book that Muslims hold very dear to their heart. And another thing, Dearborn is historic. It is done many great things. In 2023, it received a silver award for environmental friendliness, the silver award environmental friendliness by the state of Michigan. It has one of the largest indoor historic museums. And to say that individuals can come and harass your citizens and who have beaten your cops, they want to talk about, uh, the protesters didn't respect your cops. No, in fact, that is false and is a tukkoo koi, it's a logical fallacy. Uh, it is a logical fallacy because they themselves do not respect the police officers here. One individual was policed and he was put into jail for four years because of that. It is pathetic. It is pathetic and it should not be allowed by no means necessary. And for us as Muslims, we believe in justice and we also believe in saying justice no matter who it's against.
You have 30 seconds.
Whether it may bank against yourselves or anyone, each one of us should look whether or not we are being true individuals of service. And Muslims are indeed peaceful, indeed peaceful. Islam itself means to submit. The derivative is salam, which means peace. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Farhat. Yep.
Thank you, council, um, for a few moments here today. My name is Alabas Farhat. I'm the state representative for the city of Dearborn. Um, and I thank you folks all for this time and congratulations on those of you that have run reelection just recently. You know, a lot of people want to tell us what Dearborn is and what it means to live in the city of Dearborn. But I think it's prudent that we tell them what Dearborn is. Because Dearborn has been a proud and continues to be a proud American city, a city that is rooted in the core values that America was founded on. Those are freedom, diversity and opportunity. Families came here from every corner of the world, Arab-Americans included, but before that was the Italians, before that the Irish. And for years, they continued to call Dearborn home. They came here to build up America, to build up that story that we all are a part of. This is a city where generations have worked hard, raised families, served in our military. Uh, it is a city that has helped build up the industry of our nation. And during the Great World War, Dearborn was part of the arsenal of democracy. We stood up when the nation called. This city helped meet that moment and its people helped meet that moment. But now and for too long, Dearborn has been turned into a political soundbite for those that are looking to pick up cheap points on the backs of the hard-working families in this city. They've been made to feel unsafe in their own neighborhoods and their own homes. They've been made to be worried to walk down the streets. And I want to compliment our police department, actually, who's done a remarkable job keeping our houses of worship safe, our schools safe, and making sure that people can still respect and appreciate a response time despite all the shenanigans and cheap political points people want to bring to our city. The city of Dearborn is stronger than the division that surrounds us. We've seen this time and again. This council has seen it time and again. The residents have seen it time and again, but I will just say we're sick of it. We're tired of these games. We're tired of the political football. If you truly want to get to know the city of Dearborn, gladly stop by any of the establishments, any of the hospitality. Come tour the Arab-American museum, which is a museum, by the way, it's not a mosque. For those, I know there was some confusion earlier today. It's a museum where you can learn about history and the heritage and the story, not just Arab-Americans, but the story of America. And that is what our city is. Dearborn is an American city. It'll continue to be a proud American city. It'll continue to be a city that demonstrates what the very best of us can be. I appreciate that reminder, uh, Mr. Clerk. Uh, so thank you for that. And again, I just implore this council and I implore the residents of the city to continue leading in that model we know Dearborn is and that Dearborn can continue to be. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, we have exhausted our 30 minutes of public comment. All the cards that I do have, those that are keep coming up, we will keep them there and I'll bring them forward at the end of the meeting, okay? At this time, Mr. Clerk, can we proceed to, I believe, item? Limitation and the clerk will let you know when there's 30 seconds left, okay? And thank you. And just a kind reminder to address the council, you're here to address the council and be respectful of everybody in the audience. If you'd like to speak, you're more than welcome to speak and come up, but please no outbursts, okay? Uh, we have Andre Williams.
How you doing? It's good to be here. I speak here as a, of course, a resident of Detroit, a veteran, someone who's firm in my belief as a Christian, as an American nationalist. We came here today to send a message that American towns and cities will not be Islamified. We do not want this in our country. We're against that. And it's a message for white Americans and black Americans. The identity of our country is firmly rooted in our history and who we are as Christians. We should never reject that. We should never go past that. We should never let that down. We should put it up and put it forward. We have two prime examples, one in Europe and one happening in Nigeria, the slaughter of Christians in Nigeria and the invasion of Europe from Islamic countries. Now, of course, we know that our foreign policy for the last 40 years have been detrimental to the United States on behalf of Israel. I oppose that. But does not mean that we're going to open our borders to a bunch of people into our country. We're no longer going to do that. Gen Z, I believe, is opposed to mass migration. We're opposed to the destruction of our country. We're opposed to everything that the prior generations have allowed. We're no longer going to allow that and I speak firmly on that and proudly as a black American, as an American, as a Christian, against what is happening in our country. I hear about all this hate that we brought to Dearborn, but myself and people who've been here with us, we've been met with a great hate since we've been walking up and down the street, Michigan Avenue. I've been spit on. I've been called a house negro, a coon, everything under the book because I'm black and I care about my country. Imagine that. That's the nation we stand in. If you stand for your country, you're called everything under the book. If you stand for your people, whether you're white or black, Hispanic, Arab, you're called the enemy of the people. That's the time we live in and I'm disgusted by it. Walking with white Americans saying that I'm a Christian and I believe in this country feels like I'm in the 1950s. Feel like I'm a, I'm a, somebody from the South, a white person from the South walking with a black person. To see on the other side, the pain is disgusting. The fact that Americans cannot be proud of their faith and stand firm in their faith against what we're seeing across the Western world and to be opposed to it and be met with calls of Nazi and fascist, well, that's what you want to call us? If that's what you want to bring to us, hatred, well, we will stand firm in what we believe regardless of how much you hate us. Because our belief is in God, our belief is in our country, our belief is in our people. And we promote that each and every day until death. I think that's something that our history shows. We are not fearful of anyone.
You have 30 seconds.
We are not fearful of anyone in this country. Americans have built the world. We've bring great things upon this world. And as Christians, we've done much to civilize the world and we will not allow anyone to tell us we cannot be Christian, that we cannot say what we want in this country because we've built this country into what it is. And we allow people to come over here and have their say. Well, guess what? We say no to Islamification of the United States and all of Western civilization. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, folks, folks, as we indicated, please do not have any outbursts, okay? Next speaker we have is Ahman Ali Ansi.
Ahman Ali Al Ansi, 7441 Kentucky Street.
I pronounced it right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, council president, members of the council, today Dearborn witnessed two very different kinds of protests. The first was led by Anthony Hudson, someone who arrived here with fear in his heart and stereotypes in his mind, but after walking our streets, visiting our mosque and speaking with our residents, his entire perception changed. He admitted that the media lied to him and he, what he found instead was hospitality, kindness and community. The second protest was the opposite. Individuals who came here to shout and chase attention. And to them, I say, you're still welcome to sit with us, enjoy shawarma, Yemeni tea and see who we really are. You don't have to agree with us to break bread with us. And to our young people, and to our young people especially, do not give in to these provocations, the attention they crave. They feed off your reaction, your videos, your anger. Show them instead your manners, your character, your discipline. Let them shout into the wind while you embody the values your parents and grandparents, grandparents raised you with. Over the past year, I've prayed in church, I prayed in the mosques and I visited the churches, different language, uh, different languages, different traditions, but the same prayer, peace, safety and unity for our city and our neighbors. At the end of the day, we are not a city of strangers, we are a family of neighbors and no amount of outside noise will change that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next we have Mr. Anthony Hudson.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, good evening. I am Anthony Hudson. I am a gubernatorial candidate and I need you all to understand I have no affiliation with the anti-American group that came here today to destroy your town. They came for a day. One of them came from Florida who says he's running for Senate as if that comes out of a crackerjack box. I came here to build a bridge between hate and happiness in your town. I spent four days here last week. First day, day one, little nervous, didn't know what I was getting into. I hear all the stuff that's printed on the, on the TV or all the stories that are written about you. We build our own image in our head and it's only fair to come down here and see it for myself, right? I mean, I am an American. I am welcome here. I came down for four days and witnessed something I had never seen before. What the gentleman was talking about over here was his version of America where the Constitution is set for all Americans. Doesn't matter where you come from. We are all created equals in the eye, equal in the eyes of the Lord. Is it not written? You have freedom of religion in this town, just like I have freedom of religion in Grand Blank, Michigan. I don't impose on you, you don't impose on me. You get up, go to work, do your job, go home and take care of your family. I don't care what you do because you have the same freedom I have. This group here came to interrupt my peaceful walk. For almost two months, I advertised a peaceful walk. My question is, where were you? You knew about it. I asked you to come walk with us as members of this community to show strength, to show peace, to show that communities do not exist without unity. Yes, I made my, my comment, mayor. You have freedom of speech like anyone else, but as an elected official in this town, you should treat every citizen with respect and dignity. The word bigotry means when you don't get along with somebody else's point of view or idea. So I counter that back and say that you were being a bigot that night as well.
Do you have 30 seconds?
If I'm not welcome in Dearborn, should I win this race and become the next governor of Michigan? If you can't apologize to an American citizen, then I'll proclaim that you're not welcome in my state. We are all equal and we better start acting like it. Leadership needs to lead by example, not from fancy seats behind a podium, but by example. You have to set the tone and the precedence in this community so that people like me don't need a damn vest to come here and walk down your streets peacefully with Muslim citizens of this community.
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you for talking. All right, next we have Jason Ochs. Is that correct, sir?
No, D Y E. I was trying to write on a.
Okay, is it Jason?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Well, uh, I did have a speech prepared, but with the events that happened today, I want to make clear of some things here. I've had some Muslim people come up to me and say, if you're coming in peace, how come you're carrying your pistol with you? I got news for you, my friend, that is the peacekeeper. That's what keeps peace in this country. Everybody worried about Sharia law, which we found don't exist. I myself was brainwashed by the lamestream media. I came down here, we had the courage and we came and talked to people. We entered mosques, we were welcomed with open arms. We didn't have any opposition. We also didn't come down here and say, we're burning your Quran. We also didn't come down here and say, we're throwing bacon on you. By the way, is that what Jesus would do? I don't think so. In any way, shape or form, it's the most un-Christian Jesus thing that could ever be done. And I would suggest studying to show yourself approved, literally. Now, onto the mayor here. We are a constitutional republic governed by the United States Constitution and the laws. When you are acting in capacity of a mayor, like these gentlemen are acting in capacity of police officers, you are not a Muslim, you are not a Christian, you are not nothing. You are the mayor. You are only to answer to the United States Constitution and that's it. And it's fine, people make mistakes, just apologize. Anthony apologized. That's what men do. You know what I mean? We made mistakes, he made mistakes. Hell, man, we thought we were coming down here and do a frigging battle and all we battled was food and coffee. You know what I'm saying? But hey, man, we've been brainwashed on this stuff since a child, literally, you know? A lot of us went and signed up to go to war and didn't realize who the true enemies were. Now we do, and I think this is their biggest fear. But at the same time, give respect and get respect. I audit police officers, I audit government officials, all these different things. If I come in there and they say, what are you doing? And I go, First Amendment protected activity, how you doing, sir? Guess what? That video don't get nothing for views. If I come in there and they say, what are you doing? And I go, I vote my fifth, get out of my face. Guess what that does? Hundred thousand, twenty thousand, see what I mean? People want the controversy. If this was all for votes and political stuff, we'd have just lied, put a little AI, little AI thing of the prayer, you know what I mean? No, we tell the truth. This is the blue collar, we the people ditch digging campaign. This is by the people, for the people. It, it, it's just the Constitution, this is what it is. It's the only reason I'm helping him. I hate both parties. I think both parties are two wings on the same diseased Masonic bird, to be quite honest with you. I'm about unity and we the people. I've tried to tell Anthony to run on, don't tread on me, you know? Like, we're done with the corruption and there is corruption and we're going to find it. And that's what I do. I sift out government corruption and then you, you find out. You know what I mean? Faffo's, my favorite, my favorite line.
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
You guys have a good one.
Thank you, sir. All right, next we have Mahmoud Mahsan. Mahmoud Mahsan. All right, is there any, and they're either check the overflow or is there anybody left in that overflow? All right, I'll put it aside, chief, if anybody, if you don't mind. No, okay. Uh, Cam Hi? Next we have Cam Hi.
Yeah, one second.
Okay.
Hi, Cam Pigby. I'm a journalist, I'm not a protester, this is my badge, okay? Today on the streets of Dearborn, I was pepper sprayed, maced by protesters because I asked them simply why they were harassing and touching another individual who had stated repeatedly that he was only on their side of the street to talk to them and have a dialogue. My phone was smashed, you can see the broken camera right there. They stole $50 out of my pocket and they stole my microphone receiver. I went and I told one of your officers, badge number 3668, that this had happened. He told me there was nothing that could be done about it unless I went to the station. I told him, I can't go to the station, I'm working, I'm doing my job. He said, I'm working too. I said, yeah, and your job is to protect me and all of the people that are out here today, okay? So we said that I could go into the station later. I told him, you're never going to catch the guy if I go into the station later. He's going to leave, he's dressed head to toe in black block. I filmed the whole thing, but he had a mask on his face. You'll never, ever get an opportunity to arrest that person ever again if you don't go and get him right now. He said, sir, I can't leave my post. Five minutes later, I caught him in the parking lot on a personal phone call, okay? Repeatedly today, I watched people that are in this room get attacked by other people that are in this room. I watched your officers not respond to those attacks repeatedly. Then I saw somebody who was in this group, which I, again, I'm a journalist, I'm just documenting what's going on and I'm here to tell you what's going on. I saw somebody in this group get arrested. I asked the officer, Tavius Corpus, please articulate probable cause for arresting this person. They refused to. I asked name and badge number. They refused to give me their name and badge number as a member of the press with my badge clearly displayed. They would not tell me why they were arresting this person, they just did it, okay? Yesterday, I was exploring Dearborn, I came here just to, to document this from Seattle as a journalist, okay? I was exploring Dearborn, I walked up and down Michigan Avenue. There wasn't very many people out. Uh, then we wanted to hear the call to prayer that we've heard so much about. So we went to a mosque and at that mosque, I was followed by a drone. If I moved forward, the drone moved forward. If I went backwards, the drone went backwards. I went to a gas station and that drone waited outside of the gas station, just above the door for me to leave so it could begin following me again. I was followed by vehicles and I was followed by individuals on foot. There was a lot of talking here today about sexism. So I'd like to quote the prophet Muhammad, okay? One of my favorite quotes from the prophet Muhammad, "A woman's testimony is worth halved out of a man's due to the deficiency of her mind. God created two sexes, one superior and one inferior. That's why your women wear hijabs because they're inferior to men. That's why most Muslim countries, they can't leave their homes without permission of a male guardian." Is my time up?
You have 30 seconds.
Oh, 30 seconds, okay, great.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I shouldn't feel like a Demi in my country. That's what I feel like in Dearborn, Michigan. It doesn't feel like home, I feel like a Demi, a second-class citizen, which is what Christians are in the majority of Muslim countries, Demis, second-class citizens. And the policing in this city, that's exactly what happens. And I know rank-and-file officers in pretty much every city usually want to take care of these problems. You're the one giving the orders, Mr. Mayor. These guys definitely want to do something about them. Their business, look at them. These guys are all business, your orders. I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you, okay. Please, fo- folks, we don't, no outbursts, please. Uh, next we have, next we have...
You said one of us is gonna get kicked out.
Sir, sir. Uh, we have, I believe, uh, Jaden Scott, is there Scott?
Hello, my name is Jaden Scott, I'm from Bay City, Michigan. Um, guys, I'm honored to be here today in the largest Muslim city in America, and personally let the city council know that as of today, November eighteenth, Patriot Governor Greg Abbott has designated CARES and the Muslim Brotherhood, a domestic terrorist organization. Expect that to follow across the country. Maribou, we know your relationships with George Soros and the Muslim Brotherhood and CARES. After Anthony Hudson made his post, you had a coordinated...
Humm- humm.
It's my three minutes, thank you. No outbursts, thank, thank you.
All right.
You, you, you led a coordinated attack through the press releases with CARES, we know it, and we are ashamed of you. You speak as a representative of the Islamic community. Today, Christians march through this, this city because of your comments. You are a representative, hold yourself to higher decorum. We're in Dearborn, Michigan, this is the home of Henry Ford. This man put America on wheels, and also wrote a famous book that spoke about another takeover of our country. Muslims and Christians, take a look up here. There's Muslims and there's Christians.
Sir. Sir, address the count.
There's Muslims and there's Christians up here. There is one man who stands out. We are all Gentile to these people, we're all Goyim, and we must stand firm. Christ is King, America first, Michigan first, Patriots first, Maribou. The Muslim Brotherhood is designated a domestic terrorist, and so is the CARES organization in Texas. Expect that to follow across America. Everybody have a great day.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Edward Lang. Commander Madu, we just, you guys gotta keep it down, okay?
In nineteen hundred, the world was thirty percent white. Fast forward hundred twenty-five years, we are down to seven percent. The Islamification of Europe is particularly aimed at the destruction of white people. The Islamification of America is aiming to meet the same goal. Our people, white Christian, European, Western civilization, we built the arts, we built the Colosseum, we have ran the world into the industrial age, and now, this people here, the Muslim community is looking to drag us back. They're looking to oppress women, oppress homosexuals, they're looking to destroy everything that makes America great. President Trump, send ICE, send ICE into Dearborn. These people have overstayed their visas, they're H1B chain migration invaders, and they have come to this country to destroy our way of life. We know exactly your laws in your book about lying to our faces, pretending to be Americans, wearing your suits, but that doesn't happen anywhere else where you guys are in charge. There are fifty-three Muslim-majority countries, and in all of them, it is tyranny, destruction, it is shithole living. We have to call it what it is. You guys don't live like we do, we don't want you in our country. We will come and eat your shawarma in Somalia, okay? We don't need it here in Michigan, we don't need it in any part of America. We have, we have a right to self-determination. Our founding fathers fought and died for our posterity, for white Americans, and we're being driven out. You come here, and you marry four or five women, and you outbreed us, you change the laws, you make all of our country look like the places that you fled from. We don't want you here. Respectfully, get the fuck out of my country. I don't want you here. We don't want you here. I don't want you here, I don't want you here.
That's fine, sir, just...
This is our country, and the people...
Can you send the guys out there?
The veterans, the World War II veterans, that's blood has soaked for our constitutional republic, are taking a look around Europe, they're taking a look around America, and they're saying, "What the hell did we fight for? We have been taken over without a single shot fired." You guys are outbreeding insidious parasites on the American way of life. You will never look like us, you will never eat like us, you won't build buildings like us, you are nothing, you can build nothing, just like President Trump's great American friends have said. You guys are not us, and get the fuck out. America first, America only. God bless America. Jesus is King, Jesus is King.
Thank you.
Jesus is King, Jesus is King.
Thank you.
Jesus is King, Jesus is King.
Your time has expired. Order in the chambers. Order in the chambers.
Jesus is King, Jesus is King.
Guys. Yeah, sir, get these guys, guys, you gotta go back to the, sir. Everybody back to your seats, or you'll be removed.
Everybody sit down, please. Sit down, please.
All right. All right, Mr. Anthony Deegan. Mr. Deegan, do you want to speak, or you're, you're good?
Well, that is, uh, quite something to follow up, um...
Is your name, your name...
Oh, I'm sorry, my name Anthony Deegan, uh, longtime Dear- Dearborn resident. Um, I just want to say, I've, uh, I, I kinda went into the, the March midstream and have seen everything that's taken place, and this is a religious conversation today, and I think that God is extremely grieved. Um, I've seen hate, I've seen, uh, anger, I've seen a lot of pride. Um, in the cross, we see the embodiment of Christ, we see the embodiment of Christianity, its love, its self-sacrifice, its humility, and we've seen today and in the past few weeks, hate, self-serving of the highest order in, in many camps, um, and we've seen pride and arrogance. And I think there's a way to disagree, and there's a way not to disagree. As you all know, I, I have come here, I've disagreed, uh, I think that this, what's happening now is an outgrowth of the comments that have taken place in here, and, um, I've disagreed with some of those comments, but there is, this is not the way to battle that. And to attach one's name to Christ and do that is maligning the name of Christ. I talked to one, I, I got a chance to talk to one of the people who tried to burn a Quran, and as a per- as a Christian, as somebody involved in ministry who reads the Bible, I say, I, I say to myself, "How does this serve anything? How does this help anything?"" And, um, so I asked him, "Where, where do you find this in the New Testament? Is this emulating Christ? Does this, uh, change hearts and minds for Christ? Are you doing what Jesus would do?"" And he, and he said, "No, he doesn't find it in the New Testament, and he doesn't care." And so, you know, if, if you want to do your own thing, you can do your own thing, if you want to be hateful, you can be hateful, if you want to take something that is disagreeable and turn it into something times ten, you can do that, but don't attach Christ's name to that. That is not who Christ is. So I want, uh, I want to take this opportunity to read what the Bible does say about this matter. It's from First Corinthians, chapter thirteen, it's known as the chapter of love. It says, "If I speak with the tongues of men and of angels, but do not have love, I have become a noisy gong or a clanging cymbal. And if I have the gift of prophecy and know all the mysteries and all knowledge, and if I have all faith so as to, to remove mountains..."
You have thirty seconds.
"...but not, but not have love, I am nothing. And if I give all my possessions to feed the poor, and if I surrender my body to be burned, but do not have love, it profits me nothing. Love is patient, love is kind, it is not jealous, does not brag, is not puffed up, it does not act unbecomingly, does not seek its own, is not provoked, does not take into account a wrong suffered. It does not rejoice in unrighteousness, but rejoices with the truth. It bears all things, believes all things, hopes all things, endures all things. Love never fails, but if there are gifts of prophecy, they will be done away; if there are tongues, they will cease; if there is knowledge, it will be done away."
I'm sorry, your time has expired. Sir, you could, you finishing? You could finish your thought, is that the last, just finish the last thought.
I'll just finish the last thought. Um, read the rest of the chapter, it's great. Matthew eleven, uh, twenty-nine from Christ's own words. "Take my yoke upon you and learn from me, for I am gentle and humble in heart, and you will find rest for your souls." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Deegan. Mr. Mike Hashem.
Good evening, council. My name is Mike Hashem, and I'm here today as a Muslim, an Arab-American, and a Republican. I am proud to call Dearborn my home. And let's be completely honest, the outsiders who showed up here pretending to speak for Republicans weren't here for dialogue or ideas. They came here for hate, chaos, and cheap theatrics, hoping to intimidate a peaceful community. They are un-American. Let's be complete... They even tried to burn the Holy Quran, not because they stand for anything, but because without shock value, they're irrelevant. When you have no principles, no integrity, no courage, you resort to stunts meant to get attention from the worst corners of the internet. And let's make something clear, I led the charge to elect President Donald Trump in our community.
Mr. Hashem, please just address the council.
And it was the Muslim community and the Arab-Americans that voted and got President Donald Trump elected in the state of Michigan. And this is the greatest nation on the planet. These agitators throw on the Republican label like a Halloween costume and a cheap suit from Walmart, but their behavior is pure Antifa wannabes. Chaos, loud, reckless, directionless. I mean, they had to use GPS to drive a freaking bus, right? One's from Seattle, he's not even from here, doesn't know us. Real Republicans stand for faith, family, stability, and dignity. These people stand for whatever gets them a viral clip. Their goal wasn't free speech, their goal was intimidation, an emotional and psychological attack on a community they don't understand and don't respect. And all they did was expose themselves as extremists and terrorists. Those are the true terrorists. That's who the FBI takes down day in and day out, trying to kill our governor. I urge the public to not give attention to these traveling chaos merchants, who barge into cities they don't live in trying to provoke anger for their own online fame. Dearborn will not be defined by outsiders performing for a camera, and they will never speak for me, not as a Muslim, not as an Arab-American, and definitely not as a Republican. And let me tell you, Republicans hate these types of clowns. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, thank you. Mr. Chadwick, Chadwick Tillman? Yes, sir.
If you can find a suit that looks as good like this at Walmart, let me know, I'll buy it and I'll wear it.
Good evening, council, Mr. President, uh, other members, Maribou. My name is Chadwick Tillman, I'm running for State Senate in District Thirty-Five. Two months ago, Pastor Ted Barham stood right here in this allotted three minutes to raise legitimate concerns about honoring a publisher who has openly praised Hezbollah and Hamas, or, excuse me, Hamas, as resistance. These are terrorist organizations. Instead of letting him finish, this mayor here launched into a personal attack, shameful, shameful, you should wipe that smirk off your face. He called him a bigot and Islamophobe, and what I could agree with Anthony Hudson is that you are a bigot yourself. He told him on camera that he was not welcome in Dearborn, and that the day that he moves away will be celebrated with a parade. I think we should put you on a camel and parade you right on out. Several council members and the city attorney then jumped in, repeatedly interrupted, and to try, try to shut him down before his time was up. Not a good look. And that was not leadership, that was intimidation. That was an elected official and this entire diocese telling a Christian resident that his viewpoint is not tolerated in the city he calls home. And what disgusts me even more is what this mayor had to say outside this chamber. Rejected the idea that immigrants should assimilate to American culture and language, refusing to call Hamas and Hezbollah terrorist organizations while American hostages, hostages are still held and American bread has been shed fighting those same groups. Those are not values of the America I swore to defend. Those are not values of people who want to reshape this country into something it has never been. I come here tonight to say clearly, Dearborn is still part of America.
You have thirty seconds.
The United States. The First Amendment still applies here whether you are a Christian, Muslim, Jewish, or anything else. No resident should ever be told by their mayor that they are not welcome simply for speaking truth in a public meeting. I expect better from every single person on this diocese. I expect you to protect free speech, not punish it, and I expect the mayor, Abu, to apologize to Pastor Barham and to every resident he insulted that night.
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Mr. John Cena. John Cena.
I feel I should apologize for some of the things that have been said tonight, I wish I could take them back. I appreciated people apologizing to me when I experienced something a couple months ago, and when people do something purporting to be Christians, I'd like to apologize for that. I had some things I wanted to say tonight, I was gonna refer to the foiled terror plot, I'm not gonna talk about that. One thing I would like to say is that the Lord Jesus was from the Middle East, so I don't consider that Christianity is a white thing, I consider that I respect people from the Middle East, because that's where my Lord Jesus came from, and the Christian message. I feel so much has been said tonight, I don't feel like I need to say much more, uh, just, uh, you know, I'm still kind of grieving over some of the things that have been said. I appreciate other things that have been said, including by my friend An- Anthony. One other thing that's been in the news has been the Islamic cult of prayer, and so I'll just end with this, I appreciate Mrs. Andrea Unger's position about, you know, wanting to quiet that down, but I think another way of dealing with that is something that we've been doing for a year and a half now, which is a Christian cult of prayer, and that would show people that Dearborn is a positive place that allows equal rights to different people. And one Christian cult of prayer that a friend of mine has been putting out is this, in Arabic, I'll do my best to read the Arabic, I'm a little bit lazy in studying Arabic, but I'll do my best, and this is what he sings over loudspeakers, from John three sixteen. "Hakada habba Allah al-a'lam, hatta ba'dala ibnahu al-wahid, lekay la yachlika kol min yuminu bihi bal yakun lahul hayya abediya." God loved the world so much that He gave His one and only Son, so that whoever believes in Him will not perish, but have eternal life. Probably the best-known verse in the Bible. It's not a message of hate, it's a message of love. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Robin Buxton?
Buxton.
Buxton. Okay, thank you. Next we have Lauren Linderman?
Hi, um, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I actually was, someone came up and asked me to, so this is the very last minute, I did not feel prepared. But, um, my name is Lauren Linderman, I live in West Dearborn on Nowland Street, and I love my neighborhood, I love my city. I'm American, my family's been in America since the 1640s. Uh, my family's been in Dearborn for 200 years. Anyone that's familiar with Dearborn will recognize my last name, Linderman, as well as the other last names in my family, like Van Houten, proudly in association, oh, and proudly in association with Detroit Police and Wayne County Homeland Security. My husband's last name, Serta. My great-grandpa built some of the homes here, my family's buried in the cemetery on Outer Drive and Military. My grandpa, great-uncles, great-grandpa, great-great-grandpa, and my father-in-law served in Vietnam, Korea, World War II, World War I, and the Civil War, all under the American military. My beautiful grandmother made machine guns while my grandfather was deployed. I am fifth-generation Dearborn High graduate, and my grandma's brother was the mayor of Dearborn Heights, and his daughter is the Honorable Judge Van Houten in Detroit. Uh, yes, I am Muslim, no, I am not Arab, neither is my husband, and my husband was also not born Muslim. And I know that that's a lot to take in, but I hope that the protesters can watch this back and rewind it to kind of break down some of the stereotypes that they have here tonight. I'd also like to say that I was raised fundamental Baptist for 21 years of my life, my parents still are, I've been Muslim for seven, and I'm married into a family of Mexican Catholics. And let me tell you, none of my loving family has ever acted like some of the ignorant people here have tonight, and I can tell you that they never will. What I was going to talk about tonight was recently the snap cuts have been heavy on my heart. I'm human, a mother, a neighbor, and a Muslim, and all of those things require me to care about others, especially those who need help. On Halloween, I placed a bin on my front lawn so that those in need could come take whatever they need while walking in the neighborhood, and by the time I got back from taking my kids trick-or-treating, the bin was almost empty. Um, I think we often assume that the people we know are okay, that these issues aren't affecting us or our neighborhood, but food insecurity is happening right now here in our own neighborhood. And for the past two weekends, I'm sure many of you guys have seen on social media that I have posted again on Facebook about more food being added to my porch, and the outcome has been amazing. Our community has showed up. Um, I whole, I had people go shopping and add dozens of eggs, bread, milk, fruit, vegetables, and more. Dozens of families were able to come and take what they need. People left messages on my electric doorbell, knocked on my door personally to speak to me and say thank you, and an old man even left a really sweet, um, note in my mailbox saying that he wasn't mobile, but he was able to walk down the street and grab food.
You have 30 seconds.
Local stores saw me, uh, shopping and added to my donation, including Homeland Market on Monroe without ever being asked. I also spoke with the principal of Deval Elementary School to make sure that our kids are being fed, and after posting, people donated hundreds of dollars to go toward preparing food packs for the children in our community. I went shopping and filled my pickup truck with shelf perishable food and parked out in front of Deval while my baby napped in the car, and I waited for school pickup. Parents showed up to pick up their kids, asked what I was doing, grabbed a bag, and started filling these bags to be donated to Deval.
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Um, these bags are now at Deval to be sent home with students on Friday to help alleviate stress on parents, and I'd like to make sure other schools in Dearborn have similar resources. I've had people message that they're also taking the initiative to help in similar ways. I just want to sit and say thank you to my neighbors, my community, and my friends for showing up and caring about people even if we don't know them. I am so proud to be from Dearborn, as my family has been for hundreds of years, and hopefully I will continue to be from Dearborn.
Thank you very much. Rudolph Rodriguez? Rodriguez? Uh, Mr. Adib Adele Moszep. Mr. Moszep, Adele, I'm sorry. Adele Moszep. You put the middle initials, I apologize. So I skipped up there, sir.
No worries. President Serini, Mayor Hamud, City Council, Sir Clerk, good evening. I just, uh, I, I actually came here to speak to you today on something totally different, but I, I wanted just to address some of the things that were mentioned at this podium. And it's disheartening to see, uh, those comments, but, uh, Dearborn is an amazing city, and if those outsiders haven't seen it on a daily basis, I advise them to visit our libraries, our schools, our Henry IV College that we're truly proud of. And, um, I know many speakers have spoken of Dearborn and its greatness, and I'm not going to add much to what they have said, uh, but I'd like to thank all of those residents who have avoided the protesters, because that's exactly what they wanted, is the attention. So I wanted to speak to you, Council, today. I have spoken to the mayor about the subject, and it is dear to, to me, um, as somebody who wants to advocate for all residents to, um, utilize the, uh, utilities and utilize also the Civic Center that we do have at the city. Every year, probably I could go back to 2016, 2017, the city will have the data. You do have, offer discounted rates, uh, on Black Friday to utilize the center for the whole year. Uh, it was unfortunate this year that I found out that's not the option. I know many families wait until Black Friday so they can sign up for the whole year, which is something affordable for those especially middle-income to low-income families. So I ask Council to hopefully review this and, uh, make the Civic Center affordable for, uh, everyday residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moszep. Yeah, Mayor, uh, Mr. Moszep, if you'd like, if you'd like, he's going to respond, because I wasn't aware of the Black Friday, uh, so, so... Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Just keep on standing.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moszep. I know we spoke, so the Black Friday deal ended a few years ago. Um, right now, they waived the enrollment fee as it pertains to the affordability of the membership. The membership is discounted, obviously, for Dearborn residents relative to non-Dearborn residents, but we don't wait for the annual, uh, discount on Black Friday to offer affordability. At any day of the year, if you are somebody of need, you can actually go into the Civic Center, provide the financials, and they will discount your membership, ensuring that it's, uh, accessible and affordable to all families. Um, similar to the poverty, uh, discount you can receive on property taxes, similar fashion to Civic Center. If you have a family in need, you can provide financials and they will discount your plan, and you don't have to wait, uh, for any sort of, uh, annual offering on a Black Friday. So just want to communicate that publicly. That program has always been around, we've improved it, um, and, uh, as it pertains to, like, a competitive perspective, the Civic Center is still one of the cheapest memberships, uh, compared to any major private outlet across the region with, uh, respect to all the offerings that we have.
If I may ask?
Yes, of course.
I mean, that's great that we're doing that, this is the first time that I, I found about it from you, so it would be nice to publicize that for those low-income families. But I'd say for middle-income families, it's still a high rate. I'm just looking up the rates from 2016, and I understand the pricing of everything has gone up so much, so, uh, it is understandable. But I do know that the Civic Center is subsidized by the city, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
It is. Mr. Moszep, you're correct, and I, you got our commitment to, to look at it as well. The mayor had, um, made a very top priority, recreation, as you're aware.
Yes.
And we put a tremendous amount of money into that facility, and I'm sure you're aware of that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, which was due and needed to be done. So you got my commitment, uh, during, uh, our legislative, um, budget hearings to look at that and see what we can do. I was always for the separation of Dearborn resident and non-resident because they're taxpayers.
Correct.
To have a different rate. Um, but, uh, I know that, uh, we have delegated that authority to the mayor, but we will definitely look at it because it has reached a point where I've had people did say, i- it is getting a little bit more expensive, but there was a reason. We invested millions of dollars in there, and I know you've seen that.
That is commendable.
Which was, which was needed, and, and the membership people, the membership has definitely risen, so, uh, but we will definitely look at it, I promise, we'll, we'll call on that and look at it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moszep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Hamud.
Just talking about Civic Center affordability, I also want to say, one thing I'm really happy about, that I think Councilwoman Herrick, uh, was big on, was the Silver Sea Sneakers Program for seniors also. Uh, I think it's a huge deal for a lot of people, and we'll just take a moment to advertise that. I think that you guys did a lot of good work and finally got it in, so, uh, there's also subsidized rates for senior citizens for our, uh, Dearborn Civic Center.
Thank you, that is correct. Um, we do have a final speaker, Mr. Isaac.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How you doing, Mayor Hamud?
All right.
My name's Isaac.
Okay.
Yes, I was here, question, uh, I was listening to the other guys from the other side speaking, saying that they don't want Muslims here, they want us, deport us, they want to take us away. We'll gladly leave. If we leave, we're going to take what belongs to ours, that's the glasses they wear. Without, without Islam, without the Muslims, there'll be no glasses for them to wear. There'll be no TVs, no cars, no clock, no time. That's Bahu Haytham, the father of Optics, and algorithm, yah'algebra. Without the Muslims, they wouldn't be able to count their money, they wouldn't be able to build skyscrapers. So I don't see them here no more, they're gone, but that's all I have to put out for them. Without us, this world wouldn't be nothing. Alhamdulillah.
Thank you, Alhamdulillah. Thank you. How about that? Okay, Councilwoman Herrick?
My mic's not on. Isaac, I thank you for, um, making that comment. I, I think if you, if people from Dearborn even, if you have not visited our Arab-American National Museum, you definitely should, because one of the most powerful displays there is, uh, the photos on the wall and the short stories about, um, Arab-Americans who have contributed to the United States, um, through science, math, the arts, uh, and some people are surprised when they see that history goes back a long way is of the contributions of Arab-Americans, so thank you for pointing that out.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. All right, uh, anyone else here, we have exhausted all the cards, anyone else here would like to address the City Council regarding city business? Sir, step forward.
My name is Joseph Rajo, 9958 Frederick Street, Dearborn. I first want to congratulate the mayor and your wife on your new family member. God bless you all.
Thank you.
I am a student of history, a teacher of history, and a writer of history. And some of the false representations of historical perspective here tonight, I stand to correct. First of all, the Capitol buildings in Washington DC were built by slaves, slaves that were looked on as an inferior race, that had no rights. It was these slaves that built those municipal buildings. Secondly, this country was built by immigrants that came from all over the world, different religions, different ethnic groups, different cultures. They are responsible for building this country and maintaining it. And if I would say anything with regard to the anti-immigrant activity, we need a fresh new blood to revive this country, and you're not going to get it with the old song and dance, some of which I've heard here tonight. It'll come from new immigrants coming into the country and fostering a new growth, a new bloodline in this country. So God bless the country, God bless all of you, and let's stand where the, where the justice is and stand where the right is. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Herrick. All right, at this time, we have completed our...
If I can make a remark?
Yes, Mayor, of course.
Is that fine?
Yeah, you're, uh, it's on Mayor.
Thank you. You know, I'd like to, um, uh, kind of share the story of my day a bit. You know, earlier today, uh, before any headlines, before any marches, uh, before any noise, I was just a father. I was in the car with my daughters, I dropped them off at school as I do every morning, and as we got closer, they both started singing their ABCs. Now, my oldest says it confidently now, even the elemental P part. Uh, the younger sibling, obviously still stumbling through the letters, just trying to keep up, is all little siblings try to do. And then they wrapped their arms around one another, bid goodbye, and entered their classroom. And that was the start of the day. And I remember thinking in that moment that this is who I'm doing this for. That the world that they're, they're inheriting, the city that they are growing up in, and the example that we set for them. After I came to City Hall, where I met with small business owners from the Dixverner Business Corridor, from the South End, I met with small mom-and-pop business owners, many of them were immigrants, many building something from nothing. And we shared the news that we were expanding the facade grant program from Moore Avenue to the South End, a grant up to $100,000 for small businesses. One business owner pulled me aside, smiling ear to ear. He had just seen what the new business grants could do, and he saw a rendering for how uplift for his shop with designs rooted in both Arab heritage and classic American architecture. He said, "Mayor, we've never had a government believe in us like this, and he can't wait to pass this on to the next generation." That is Dearborn. That's the city that I know, and that's the future that we deserve. And maybe that's why today hit a little bit differently. Because while we were building up small businesses, while children were singing on their way to school, dozens of protests were marching through our streets, shouting about Muslims in America. Some of them were misled, others came with hate in their hearts. One man wrapped a Quran in bacon and screamed at residents, and as I tuned in live, I heard him calling others monkeys and saying that they are incompatible with America. And he did this ironically while walking past our historic nativity scene at the old City Hall, a symbol of peace and a symbol that is sacred for thousands of Christian families in our city and Muslim families as well. And yet, even then, Dearborn showed who we truly were. I saw one resident, a local barber, on his story. He shouted back, "Though no matter what you tell me, I want you to know I still love you as my brother." He bought a case of water to start passing out to everybody marching by, and he told them that "I hope the ignorance that is encapsulated in your heart shatters one day." That is Dearborn, a place where neighbors show up for one another, where hurt is met with compassion, where hate is rooted out by dignity, by decency, and by our shared humanity. And so tonight, as those, as those marchers walk the same road we walk every Memorial Day Parade, the longest reigning Memorial Day Parade in the state of Michigan, celebrating our centennial anniversary in 2026, the same street where we honor the fallen heroes who gave their lives and made the ultimate sacrifice. We were reminded of something fundamental. Courage is not loud. Patriotism is not cruel. And strength is not hateful. The marchers tried to divide, but Dearborn did what Dearborn always does, we stood tall. We are a city built by workers, by immigrants, by veterans, and by families who believe in the promise of America. A city where my daughters can sing their ABCs or Alif Ba'atah without fear. A city where a small business owner can dream bigger, but because their government actually delivers on their promises. So tonight, it's not about those who marched. Tonight is about us, it's about Dearborn. The story of Dearborn is, and always will be, a story of progress, and as long as I'm mayor, that promise will never be broken. Thank you.
Okay, this time do we have, this time do we have a motion to adjourn? Offered adjourned by Councilwoman Herrick. We are adjourned.